Right. Okay, I'd like to call the city council meeting Monday, May 6th, 2024, to order at 7:00 PM. If you'd stand for pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Okay, tonight, we have excuse absences from Andrew LaFrenz and at this time, Jeanette Santiago. Ty Bailey will be here within a half hour. So, looking at the agenda, looking for an approval of the agenda or any changes?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President Miller.
I move that we add a proclamation for National Law Enforcement Week.
Have a motion to add one proclamation, National Law Enforcement Week. Any seconds?
A second.
Second by Counselor Holmes. Any discussion? All in favor of the agenda with the addition, please, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we are now at public comment. We have a couple here. Public comment, this is the place on the agenda where public is invited to speak to council regarding any matter not on the agenda and not scheduled for public hearing. Members of the public addressing council are requested to give their name and city of residence. Please try not to repeat questions to allow for more speakers. Speakers are to limit their testimony to five minutes as we're limited 30 minutes total for all public comments. And we have a two here. We'll start in order. Mr. Paul Fedrich, if you'd like to come on down. We noticed you did mark that this is an agenda item, so you can speak now or then, whichever one you prefer. Two and a half minutes each time.
Speak as a public comment, not on the agenda, and I'd like to speak on the agenda item. Agenda item.
So this is not about number five?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Paul Fedrich, Scappus, member of the 50-year planning committee, as well as the Parks and Rec Committee, and the Economic Development Committee. So, as all you guys know, I'm part of these committees, and it's getting extremely frustrating to get things done for many years because of lack of funds. You know, we've been on the Parks Committee, we have great plans, we have no money. And Joel Hoggan interviewed with you guys, he asked you guys what the biggest concerns were to council, and it was funding, funding, funding. And we know that there's no magic bullet for funding. But what I never hear about is spending. I never hear about how can we cut spending? How can we cut spending so we have some funds to do some of these great things that the Parks Group is doing, wants to do, et cetera, et cetera? And that's my concern. My concern, what brought me up here, is that a couple weeks ago, when during these meetings, the accountant, city accountant said, I talked about outrageous legal bills. Outrageous was the quote-unquote term. And it really concerned me because before we had a legal counsel that was on retainer, and now they're billed billing by the hour, hundreds of dollars by the hour. I'm also, and you guys know, I come to these meetings a lot, I watch these meetings, I hear from city council people. I called this guy, I called the legal guys up, I sent them an email. I'm sure you're aware that every time you contact the legal team, anyway, the clock ticks. Probably ten-minute increments. You send them an email, they charge you. You read it, they charge you. They think about it, they charge you. They respond, they charge you. If they think about responding again, they charge you. That is how the legal system works, billable hours. And yet, we continue to outrageous spend. This is not how other companies do it. This is not how, no, I worked at Nike, as most of you guys know. We did not have a line to the legal team. You cannot call up the lawyers at Nike. You have to go through a third party, and they will determine if the question is even worth contacting the legal team. So, I look at this stuff, and then I go to one of the meetings, and I'm, we go through an agenda item about the guidelines for meetings. So, the assistant to the city manager said, "I had the legal team comb through documents, and because some of these documents needed updates." Well, this up, this meeting update guideline was already updated November 21st, ordinance 897. November 2022, ordinance 905, and now it's being modified for a third time. For a third time about meeting guidelines that we could get from the League of Oregon Cities. I mean, where is this coming from? I mean, the spending, 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 and is it a culture thing? Is it start with city managers? I don't know. But it, it's, obviously, funding isn't going to just come out of thin air. We got to work on the spending. Let's talk about consultants for a second. We had a great 2017 Parks Master Plan. It was excellent. For some reason, it was decided we're going to completely redo the master plan again. There was no need for that. Oh, we're told, oh, we needed it for the grant for Grabhorn. No, we did not. The 2017 plan had Grabhorn in it. We just needed to do a small amendment to the plan. Instead, we spent six figures on a new plan that is not better than the 2017 plan. I can go on and on. Facilities Master Plan. Hey, I read that plan. It was a PowerPoint with pretty pictures, with one slide that said resilient thinking with a water droplet. I mean, we're paying for this stuff, five figures for that. Goal setting, city council, you guys pay for a consultant. You guys are all professionals. You guys have been through hundreds of goal settings. And you pay for consultants to help you through this so we get a PowerPoint? It's ridiculous. I ask all you guys. Funding is not going to come out of thin air. We got to talk about spending, and it has to start with you guys and ultimately up here. Because honestly, we, this is our city funds. This is, we're the citizens, and we're waiting for things to happen. And without any funds, it isn't happening right now. And it's incredibly frustrating to the Parks Team. We've lost members because we're not doing anything. And we can feel it throughout the board. So I ask you guys fiscal responsibility, please, going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Did it? We do have one more. Lacey Tolls. Like to come give us an update. Appreciate it. Thank you for joining us. We have a clock up here just for you to see, so you, if that helps. Take your time.
My name's Lacey Tolls. I am the airport coordinator/intern manager from Port of Columbia County. I'm here to give you an update on the incident that occurred last week, and if you guys have any questions. Our team at the Port, Columbia County, thought it would be a good idea to let you, but we're unaware. So, 5:52 on Monday, April 29th, the plane owned by Flight, the Flying Aces Airplane Club, ran by Clayton Needlin, crashed at the airport. Emergency services were dispatched to the scene. The pilot was not injured and needed no medical attention. Port was notified, we filed a NOTAM, and there was an airport closure. The Scappus Fire District deployed its drone for their investigation, and there is not, they have not been given any, we have not been given any specific reasons other than weather-related. Just crosswind, and it Transwestern Aviation was notified, procured a tow truck, removed the plane quite quickly. Runway was cleaned of any remaining foreign objects, and the airport was fully operational by 9:42 PM. EQ was contacted, actually contacted us. They had less than 10 gallons of aviation fuel or avgas spilled on the runway, so there's minimal issue was resolved. We just wanted to make sure that we gave our gratitude for the swift dispatch of the fire department and the to let you guys know that we appreciate that. Do you have any questions about the incident or any questions about the airport? Or what we're up to out there? Are you with any?
No, but I did see online a picture with the drone, and someone said, "I sure hope the drone didn't cause this accident," but it's good to know it did not.
Did not.
It was used after the fact.
We are, the very busy airport recently. We are installing an emergency generator, which we hope will serve the county in emergency service situations. Large earthquake, perhaps, or maybe any time the highway would be closed for a short period or longer. The urgency generators will serve at least hopefully about 28 days. Aviation fuel and/or
I know that there's been some construction out there, and getting in and out has been fine, and the road construction is done or?
Road construction on Moore Road, the extent is not complete. I don't believe it's supposed to until June, and communication from the city has been it has not caused any issues, I'm aware.
Great. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Getting from staff. Thank you. Okay. Is Judy Judith here today? If you go by Judith, Judy's fine. Okay. We're looking at our consent agenda. Today on the consent agenda, we have an April 29, 2024, special city council work session minutes, an appointment of Judy Eisenman to the Economic Development Committee, and a resolution 24-03, a resolution approving a special procurement for IT services. I'm looking for a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that council approves the April 29, 2024 consent agenda as presented.
So President Miller makes an emotion to accept the consent agenda as a, any seconds? Second by Counselor Holmes. Any discussion? I do want to say thank you, Judy, for being, stepping up onto the Economic Development Committee. Susan, she'll start getting emails and stuff about the next meetings and everything? Great. Okay, seeing no more discussion, all those in favor state by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we've got a few proclamations tonight. We've got VFW Buddy Poppies. Want to come on up, Dave? Let me go ahead and read this for you. Whereas the annual distribution of Buddy Poppies by the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States has officially been recognized and endorsed by governmental leaders since 1922, and whereas VFW Buddy Poppies are assembled by disabled veterans, and the proceeds of this worthy fundraising campaign are used exclusively for the benefit of disabled and needy veterans, and the widows and orphans of deceased veterans, and whereas the basic purpose of the annual distribution of Buddy Poppies by the Veterans of Foreign Wars is eloquently reflected in the desire to honor the dead by helping the living, and whereas leadership within the City of Scappus is built upon the philosophy that daily decisions and actions must incorporate individual accountability and ethical character qualities such as honesty, dedication, personal integrity, courage, compassion, love, and respect for all people. Now, therefore be resolved, I Joseph Backus, Mayor of City of Scappus, do hereby urge the citizens of this community to recognize the merits of this cause by contributing generously to its support through your donation for Buddy Poppies on May 17th and 18th, 2024, for the distribution of these symbols of appreciation for the sacrifices of our honored dead. Further, I urge all patriotic citizens to wear a Buddy Poppy as mute evidence of our gratitude to the men and women of this country who have risked their lives in defense of the freedoms which we continue to enjoy as American citizens. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Scappus to be affixed, done at the City Hall of Scappus, Oregon, on this May 6th day of 2024. Thank you.
Someone's giving it out earlier.
There's our funding.
Yeah.
Time, it's your turn to read one.
Yeah.
Hey, we are on to National Mental Health Awareness Month. Going to just read mainly the title on this one. This May is Mental Health Month in the City of Scappus. So I encourage all residents of Scappus to educate themselves and others about mental health conditions, treatment options, and available resources. Challenge stigma by speaking respectfully, inclusively about mental health. Seek help if they are struggling with their mental health and encourage others to do the same. Support organizations that provide mental health services and advocacy. Create safe and supportive environments for open conversations about mental health. And together, we can create a community where everyone feels empowered to prioritize their mental well-being and seek help when needed. Since we do have our Director of Public Works here. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our community's citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of and understanding informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operations of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets, and highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection. Therefore be resolved, I Joseph Backus, Mayor of City of Scappus, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th to 25th, 2024, as National Public Works Weeks in the City of Scappus. And I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and recognize the contributions which public work officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Thank you, David.
Police chief has agreed to share his donuts with them on that week. Sharing any of my
I get a picture, Dave. All right, let me sign this for you, Dave. Come on up, get a picture. Tao, you here tonight? Come on up. Let's read one more here. We also want to celebrate Vietnamese Remembrance Day proclamation. So I'm going to read this one. Whereas Vietnamese refugees have proudly resided in Primeville, the State of Scappus, State of Oregon, since the conclusion of Vietnam War, April 30th, 1975. And whereas Vietnamese Americans have put forth their full toiling energy building the City of Scappus, State of Oregon, in a multiple of prominent areas including industry, economy, culture, education, and military service. Whereas Vietnamese Americans have counted on the State of Oregon, USA, as being their second heart, mind, and family homeland. And whereas every year, Vietnamese Americans observe Remembrance Day on April 30th to solemnly honor the 58,000 American soldiers that included 810 Oregonian soldiers, and more than 300,000 South Vietnamese soldiers who sacrificed their lives in the line of duty for freedom and democracy in South Vietnam from November 1st, 1955, to April 30th, 1975. Now, therefore, I, the Mayor of Scappus, do hereby proclaim April 30th to be recognized as Vietnamese-American Remembrance Day, and I encourage all to join in this observance. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Scappus to be affixed, done at the City Hall in City of Scappus, Oregon, on the 6th day of May, 2024. I'll get you one. I'll sign one here, and we'll get one for you.
Thank you.
All right. Urgent? Okay. This is National Law Enforcement Week. Think it is right now, so I'm going to read this one. To recognize National Police Week 2024 and to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States and colluding the dedicated members of the Scappus Police Department. Whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, there are currently 24,067 law enforcement officers in the United States that have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, including 191 officers in Oregon. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. Whereas 282 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officer Memorial this spring, including 118 officers killed in 2023 and 164 officers killed in previous years. Whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of the fallen officers and their family. Therefore, be it resolved that City of Scappus formally designates May 10th through the 16th, 2024, as Police Week in Scappus, and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Scappus to be affixed, done at the City Hall in City of Scappus, Oregon, on this May 6th, May 2024. Okay. We're on to new business. We do have an update on the city manager search. Today, we're joined by Bob Larson of GMP Consultants Online. Bob, if you'd like to take it away?
Yes, can you hear me? Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay. Hello, Mayor Backus, members of the council. I have also with me, I believe, Richard Myers from the GMP team. I believe he's on another remote connection here. I'm pleased to report we received 17 applications for the position, and Richard and I reviewed those over the weekend as well as this morning. And we've determined that nine of those applications are good, solid candidates, and so we're pleased to report that. And we'll be interviewing those candidates over the next two weeks, and then we'll present a report to your staff that they can distribute to you, the mayor and council, and then we are anticipating a meeting on Thursday, May 23rd, an executive session to go over those candidates with the mayor and council. Does anyone have any questions so far?
Back in my schedule. No, looks good. Thank you.
Yes.
Sir Jacob.
Hello, Bob, this is Counselor Jacobs. Question for you with respect to the 17 applicants, and you identified nine to move forward for the interview process. Can you please share a little bit about what the criteria was to boil down to nine?
Sure. We looked at, first of all, the minimum qualifications that had been listed for the, for the actual position itself, which is the education and experience. But then we also looked further on, obviously, wanting to make sure they displayed at least the minimum number of years that was expected, including either a bachelor's degree and/or a master's degree. And then that's really meeting the minimum qualifications. And according with state law for Oregon, we also have to look at the potential for veterans' preference, which we have to obviously acknowledge any and all candidates who may have that. But we haven't gone through those yet. We have, obviously, got to do the next steps. But we looked at that as a minimum qualification. So they met that, that minimum qualifications, we have to consider them as a candidate. We didn't want to go any further until we actually started interviewing these candidates to determine whether or not they're meeting further qualifications as far as the ideal candidate, the opportunities and challenges, some of the experiences they may have, that we would therefore further recommend their continued consideration or not. But that'll have to come after we interview the candidates.
So I'm sure you said this, but then you're going to interview the nine candidates and then come back to us, hopefully, on May 23rd, executive session, to give your report on those nine candidates?
That's correct.
And then we will go from there, whether we'll, and do other interviews, we'll set up other interviews, meetings with people that we kind of at that point, then it kind of gets turned over to us more?
Yes, we'll work with you, obviously, to determine the next steps, whether or not you want to continue to look at those candidates, which of those candidates, and then the process for doing that. There's, there's options in order to do that. You know, council may decide they want to, to screen some of the candidates further, or they may want to bring them in as finalists. And then we could obviously help you determine that process, the structure of that, and who else may or may not be involved besides the mayor and council.
Yes, Counselor Jacobs.
Hello, Bob, Counselor Jacobs again. Question, where is, are there any candidates that were considered that have transferable skills as it relates to the criteria? Meaning, in other words, are there other candidates in the pool that are not just city managers from other locations? Like they come from a different type of a background?
There were just a few of those that met the qualifications.
And do you feel then if we meet on May 23rd, depending on everybody's schedules, we, that gives us maybe five weeks before the end of June? We should be able to go a long ways in those five weeks?
Yes. What we would do on the, the plan, if you will, the goal on May 23rd is to determine which of those nine candidates you would like to further consider. We would then set up the process for the next steps, and the, the schedule anticipates roughly two to two and a half weeks from that May 23rd date of having those finalists appear before the mayor and council, as well as any other panels you would like to have involved, if that's the case. And that would give us, it should give you enough time to select a candidate, a preferred candidate, and perhaps appoint one before the end of June.
Did you see applicants kind of from all over the country? I mean, were there a few from outside of Oregon?
Yes, there were, sir.
And will we see the few that, will we see something before the executive session that we can look at a little bit before we meet, or will we, the paperwork, you'll bring it with you?
No, the, my, I would like to get you the information on those semifinalists on or about Friday, the 16th of May, which would give you then that, that weekend, as well as the first four days of that following week before the 23rd, up to that meeting to review those, that information. We'll give you a, a copy of each of the candidates' reports on the interviews that we conducted. We'll provide you with a copy of the resume, their cover letter, the, as much as a background check as we can get done in the initial screening, as well as their answers to supplemental questions that we've posed to them as well.
Great, thank you. Anything else? Staff, anything? Larry?
As far as interview panels, there were two, there was a council panel, and then there was a panel that had senior staff direct reports there was a panel that had senior staff direct reports to the city manager, as well as the fire chief, the school superintendent, past president, council president, or attendants, people who would work with that role and understand that role. And then that information went to council for more decision-making data.
So make sure you get nice and close to that microphone, Larry. So will we decide then on our next steps of how we want to do, whether we do an advisory panel or bring out people? Will that, will we discuss that at that executive session and kind of decide which way we want to go?
Yes, we can certainly design that. I would suggest that you may want to not do that in executive session. It's not required. I'm not even sure if it's allowed in the state of Oregon. You may want to go to an open session just to talk about the parameters, because you aren't identifying any candidates. What you're really talking about is designing the process for the finalists interviews. And I can lead you through that. We've got a pretty standard form that we use, and it provides a lot of options for the mayor and council to make along the decision points. But we could perhaps have the executive session, if you wanted to have it on the agenda, that there would be an open discussion, excuse me, discussion, open session right after that, if possible. If it's that part of the special meeting, it would help us to then guide you through that, and you can make those decisions that very day.
Okay, we'll meet May 20th in regular session. Do you feel we need to decide anything before that? May 20th, we'll just wait till the executive session?
You can do it one of two ways, Mayor. You can certainly meet before or after that executive session, doesn't have to be on the same day. If you wanted to meet in open session and talk about that process, you certainly, you can avail yourself to that on May 20th, as you mentioned, if that was what you're referring to.
No, I think we'll wait the special session, May 23rd, have the executive session, and then potentially open up for a decision on the process that we want to go after that.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, any help, anything you can give us to help would be great. Anything else? All right, appreciate it. Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome. Thank you.
See you soon. Thank you. Hey, next in your packet, I have, we just are updating our council liaisons, adding Ty Bailey is the education liaison. So I think that's the only change we made on there, so I'm kind of looking for a motion to accept the 2024 city council liaisons.
Moved.
Moved by Counselor Bailey to accept the city council liaisons. Any seconds?
Second.
Second by Council President Miller. Any discussion? All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. On to number five. We've got a 50-year-plan contract amendment, Community Development Director Lori Oliver Joseph, if you'd like to take it away. Well, typically, we don't have public comment on, let her, let her go over her analysis, and if your questions are answered. If not, then we'll take your question.
Thank you, mayor and council. So yes, as you stated, additional funding is requested to complete the 50-year-plan project. That's due to increased scope. This is related to council goal 2.1, continued development of the 50-year-plan. And then just as a FYI, the first time this became a city council goal was during fiscal year 2019, 2020. So the 50-year-plan contract was executed January 10th, 2022, between Echo Northwest and the city of Scappus. It contained a total not-to-exceed amount of 278,954. This is similar in cost to any of the master plans that the city puts together for our utility infrastructure. This three-plus-year project includes a large variety of deliverables. I've included those here, and also, we did see some slides earlier about those main components. So the consultant team has worked diligently to stay within budget. However, there were some items that were not in the original scope, and some items that required more hours than were budgeted for. Again, as you can imagine, over a three-year project, things somewhat change along the way. But these are important to planning, to get added in, in order to complete the project. So in terms of items that weren't including, the major, major item was that the county adoption process was not included in the original scope of work. That was an oversight. It should have been included. Because it was not included, however, Echo Northwest did not include that in their original scope either. The city has since reached out to the county planning department to find out sort of what their process is going to look like, what they're requesting. So I've included that here. They're requesting one internal work session with city and county staff and the Department of Land Conservation and Development, that's DLCD. They are looking for one work session with the County Planning Commission, a work session with Board of Commissioners, and one hearing, and then all, any of these hearings are subject to additional hearings. So at the bare minimum, it's one with the County Planning Commission and one with the County Board of Commissioners. So again, UGB expansions and establishment of urban reserves can be contentious. The staff would prefer to budget for two hearings at each part of that, so two with the County Planning Commission and two hearings with the Board of Commissioners. This is just so that the money is accounted for upfront, and we have this set aside to complete the project and to cover any unknowns as we're moving forward. That way, we can see how this sort of fits in with the rest of the budget. Let's see here. This is, again, so the Echo Northwest can attend these meetings on the county adoption process. It's going to be very helpful to have them there to answer any technical questions related to the analysis for the housing capacity analysis and the economic opportunities analysis, as well as the UGB and urban reserves analysis. The other item, which I have since discovered, this was included in the original scope of work, it's the findings for the HCA and EOA. The difference here being that these were included in the original scope as a fairly simple findings, not going into a ton of detail. This is again, so that's an extra 5,000. That again, is being set aside in anticipation that we will be contacted potentially by outside groups, and we would like to reserve some additional funding in this area to draft more extensive and robust findings. We have been contacted already by the Fair Housing Council of Oregon. So we know for sure that they, and they do for every UGB expansion, ask for the findings related to housing capacity analyses. In total, and I have a list here, the additional scope amount requested is 50,000. This covers, again, consultant attendance at seven additional meetings, HNA and EOA adoption findings, the completion of the UGB UR analysis, project management, because the project is going longer than originally anticipated. And then the remaining is a contingency of 16,000. Again, anything can change once we get into the hearings process. My hope was to allocate funding so that we are covering our bases as we move forward to complete this important council goal. Again, this has been identified as a goal for five years now, and we are just looking for some additional funding to set aside to ensure that if there are any changes along the way, that we are covered for that. This addition of the 50,000 has been incorporated into the draft 2425 budget to see how it fits along with everything else. And then the addition of the 50,000 to the contracted amount would be on a time-of-materials basis and not to exceed. So we don't need the additional hearings. We wouldn't use that money. So again, staff's recommendation is, in order to complete this project as efficiently and timely as possible, staff recommends that the council approve $50,000 contract amendment to support the adoption process and completion of the remaining work, and this will fulfill council goal 2.1. One of the things, thank you, Counselor Holmes, did send some questions earlier today. That was helpful. One thing I wanted to touch on specifically is what that previous process looked like in 2011. And so the previous UGB expansion, the planning commission held, just ballpark, just so you understand that there could be quite a few hearings involved. The planning commission held four hearings. They made a recommendation then to the city council, and these are legislative land use hearings, they follow a very particular course of action that's set out in state law. And so they made a recommendation to the city council. The city council held five hearings on that request. There were just additional information they requested, and so it took five hearings to get through that process. For the county process in 2011, so the planning commission held at least one work session that I was able to track and I'm aware of, was one planning commission hearing, and then the County Board of Commissioners held three hearings. So a total of four hearings at the county, which is what I'm hoping to cover for this process as well. And one work session, although this time around, they're requesting two additional work sessions than what was held in 2011. On the previous process, the UGB expansion was appealed. So it got tied up for quite some time. It was adopted by council in 2011 and was resolved in 2015. So in speaking with the previous city planner, he said, from the time they started the entire process until the time the appeal was resolved, it was a total of seven years. So these are quite lengthy processes. Happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, so as a follow-on to that, thank you for doing some quick research there. It's helpful context. Did we previously have a consultant working with us to shepherd us through the process back in 2011, 2015?
Yes.
Okay, so the use of a consultant doesn't necessarily reduce your risk of there being contention around it, or it's not an insurance policy necessarily?
No, the use of a consultant is because they bring specialized technical experience to the project that typically you do not have on your city staff. So creating an economic opportunities analysis, a housing capacity analysis, findings for UGB expansions, these are very technical skills that typically any city would hire additional consultant work for.
And so following along that logic, given that these documents have already been completed, what is the relevance of having the consultant in these meetings now?
For me, it's going to be if there are technical questions related to the analysis that were completed. So we have the finished documents, but in terms of questions that may arise on the background, or the reason for having to do the studies in a particular way, those are the areas where I would rely on a consultant to explain that in further detail.
Wouldn't, isn't there like a standardized process that this goes through?
And so there are certain touchpoints that have to be covered, you know, through the statutes and how things are laid out. But that doesn't mean that you won't have questions arise during hearings. Now, if we did not have the consultants there, and there's something that came up that I could not answer immediately in the hearing, it's going to, likely what's going to happen is that's where you're getting into the four and five hearings at one hearing's body. And so it's going to delay the process of getting to adoption, potentially costing more overtime, if you just had the person there during the hearing the first time.
Where I have a pause with the proposal is when I just do simple math of what seven meetings cost at 1750, 17,500, that's essentially 2,500 for a meeting. I think that's grossly over build. I think that's not, that's not within our means. So I have great pause with that.
One thing we did talk about, and that is, and I don't know, Beth, if you want to, so Beth stayed in case there were questions, this would potentially be something she could respond to. She is traveling from out of the area for our meeting. I will say, I guess traditionally in the past, and granted, this is, you know, a different council than was here, when we put the original scope together, there was a desire to have consultants here in person. Perhaps that's changed. We've all gone through COVID now, you know, maybe there's more flexibility there. But I do know, and I did already ask if we had our consultants join remotely, that that would drop that cost down considerably. It would go from the 17,5 down to just over 10, just over 10,000.
So, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead, Beth.
So it's partially attending the meetings and being ready to answer the questions, and it's partially preparing for the meetings. And if you don't need travel, then that cuts a substantial amount of time off. I would be delighted to do the meetings if I could be effective remotely. And so that ends up being the question.
So I did have that on my list. I mean, a lot of things have changed, and talking with our attorneys as to, is there is any savings on virtual? I don't know what each meeting is like, and if some are going to be a lot more in-depth and longer, but does virtual help? But I understand you would have to prepare and plan for every meeting, because you want to be prepared. Do they give you information ahead of time? Like, this is kind of what we want to go over tonight at the meeting? So?
So.
An idea ahead of time?
Yeah, so as the consultants, they are planning, kind of, there's a whole scope of work that they're going to work through, and they have deliverables identified, you know, for each meeting. So meetings are called when there is something basically to present. So Beth is essentially reporting back to us what the topic of the next meeting will be based on those deliverables that they're working through. So yeah, she is already always aware ahead of time what the topics will be. If you're talking about, do you mean hearings in particular?
Yeah.
So we would know, the agenda would be set ahead of time.
What typically happens is that you get comments from, you know, landowners or an outside group, where they're saying, we think this is a problem, or we think that's a problem. And so there's a certain amount of research that one has to do to go back and answer that. It's not just off of the top of your head about various things. If there were real landowner concerns about where the lines were drawn that we were talking about this evening, then that might be something that we needed to collaborate with staff on. So there's enormous number of unknowns. I've been involved in a number of these. Only a few of them go without a hitch. There's usually a hitch somewhere, because you're talking about essentially making people's property worth a lot more by bringing it into an urban growth boundary. So there's, there's a lot of, there's a pretty big expectations and value to that. So we would be fine, if you wanted to go with us doing things remote, you might think about whether you wanted to have us in person for the public work sessions. And then if things seem to be going well, having us remote at least the first hearing, and maybe there's only one hearing. And we should have a sense through the city process how the hearings are going. And so what I would say is, we'll do, obviously, what the city wants us to do. I would rather avoid Lori coming back and asking for more money, because we like to do what we say we're going to do within the budget where we say we're going to do it. But there's a lot of unknown in this, honestly. I've worked on projects that have gotten hung up in the courts for a decade and longer, because the Oregon land use system is incredibly litigious.
So one option then is go- So one option then is going forward, like I said, with the first meeting, virtual, see how it goes, see if the information, we got through it, the questions that came, you know, were we able to get through and kind of go from there, next meeting and game plan it. But you're right, this 50,000, if it takes four or five years like the other one, it's going to go beyond the 50,000, I would assume.
Yeah.
That contingency is only a couple more meetings at best.
And what often happens is that if things are starting to get hung up, your consultant kind of goes on hold while staff are working through things. I've, for instance, worked with the city of McMinnville for the last few years on some of their work where there's very powerful groups in Yamhill County that have concerns about UGB expansions. And so I'll get a call up out of the blue, asking a very specific question, and I try to answer it as quickly as I can, but it requires a lot of thinking and going back into the archives essentially, when it's a question two or three years after the project is, the analysis has been done.
Were you involved in the North Plains UGB expansion?
I was involved in that much earlier before it went to UGB, but I've been watching that on the sidelines quite a lot.
That's probably gone several meetings and?
Oh, that's, yeah, that one's gotten to an interesting point. Our colleagues from 3J Consulting, who are doing the work on the development code, they've been involved and been leading the North Plains UGB expansion.
I mean, I understand, fiscally responsible, we are, it's budget time. I'm one of the most frugal guys around, so I really do believe in that. But I also want to make sure that we don't end up costing ourselves more in the long run by not planning properly or preparing to plan and insurance. So I would, I'm okay with this if we go in with the mindset of trying to be as frugal as possible and maybe start with the virtual meeting and see how the questions are and see how we go. Yes, Councilor Holmes?
Just one more question about the process. So if you could kind of predict how you think might, things might change around the process with the UGB expansion? So the Senate Bill 1537 was passed to try to make this process a little bit easier?
Not really, if I could be honest with you, Counselor.
Well, that's what I'm wondering how the changes would be, because I was looking at just kind of what other communities in Columbia County are doing around their urban growth boundary. And there was an article in the Columbian just as recently as March, and it looks like Rainier might be in a position to take advantage of a quick expansion. And I don't know, but I assume they haven't been going through as lengthy and extensive of a process as this. So is there a quicker path?
Not for scappus, because to be qualified for 1537, which I think relatively few cities in Oregon are qualified for it, you have to have renter cost burden in the most recent census year that's higher than 25% are severely cost burdened. Most recent census shows that 9% of scappuses are severely cost burdened. That's considerably different than the data showed a few years ago. And this isn't saying that the problem is getting better. This is saying that scappus is a small place, and the American Community Survey is a sample. And so looking at a small piece of a small place, you have higher margins of error, honestly. I think this is a flaw in how the state is using this particular piece of data. And then the other approach is looking at most recent data from HUD through a data source called CHAZ, which I forget the exact acronym. It's basically the American Community Survey with additional analysis done by the Census Bureau for HUD. It's a couple of years older. So the most recent information from CHAZ says that the city has a greater share of, I think severely cost burdened than Oregon for renter households. And I think scappus was coming in just slightly less than the Oregon average. So my reading of who can use 1537 is that it's not available to scappus at this time. And furthermore, if you did an expansion with 1537, then you have a lot more responsibilities. You have to do some master planning. A fair bit of the land that's brought into the UGB has to be for affordable housing at a certain income level, affordable at below average. Not saying that's a bad thing. There's a lot of ways in which I think it's a good thing, but it's a lot more complex. We worked with BEN to do this in a whole different process a couple of years ago. And, you know, in BEN, it's an interesting process. They got land into their UGB through a whole different process. So, but that master planning is an expensive requirement.
And doesn't it limit you to 50 acres?
It would limit you to 50 acres.
And it wouldn't establish urban reserves?
Would not establish urban reserves. It would not include commercial land or anything from municipal. If you remember, you need about 34 acres, according to the analysis that we did, for the next 20 years. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't establish urban reserves for you. So you'd still be going through this process. I don't want to seem flippant, but through this analysis, you're getting almost a two for one. You're getting the UGB plus the urban reserves, which will make your next expansion a little easier than this one.
Okay, that's helpful.
You are saying there are special requirements if you were to qualify under that and constraints that our UGB would not necessarily?
Right.
That's Councilor Jacob.
One last question, first a comment. Lori, I think that you possess all the skills and knowledge actually to probably have these hearings on your own, given the last several years just interacting with you. So that's not to discredit what you're asking for. It's really because I think you're that knowledgeable and capable. If this is not approved, where does this project end? How does it end if you do not receive this additional money tonight?
That would be a discussion I would need to have with Beth. I don't know that I could answer it immediately.
Okay. So basically, how much money do you have left right now without the additional 50? Ready?
Well, we have allocated what was in the original contract.
Right. I'm just curious, what's been billed and paid?
So in fiscal year 2223, we spend 83,361. We're estimated to spend 125,000 this fiscal year because that's what's in the budget. So we're holding it at that.
If I may, you might consider reducing the number of county meetings, reducing the It would be stressful to get through the rest of the analysis going over budget, which is what we would be doing. And we're, honestly, we're not going to abandon the city. We don't do that. But when we started the project, part of the discussion with the city was there's a lot of unknowns. We didn't know if you were looking at a UGB land swap, a UGB expansion, and/or establishing urban reserves. That's the only thing we knew for sure. And so we estimated best we could. We've come in under budget on some tasks and moved that money around to where we needed more of it, especially around things like code writing, that kind of thing. Tried to keep our project management costs as low as we could. So we're trying to be as fiscally responsible as we can with the budget we have. We certainly, we won't abandon the city.
But Beth, you?
Smart for me to say, but it's true.
In your scope, you did not quote county meetings?
No, we did not.
We did not. So if we had, it would have been higher. You would have budgeted those in, and the 20,000 or so more would have been in the quote at that time.
It would have been. And it's always, I mean, honestly, at the beginning of any of these projects, it's always hard to see where the holdups are going to be. So for instance, in this project, one of the things we struggled with was working with the housing needs analysis. Because it wasn't an analysis we completed, we have to make extensive findings on it. And the city will get called down by the Fair Housing Council of Oregon if there aren't more extensive findings for the housing needs analysis.
Mr. Mayor?
So President Miller?
So question on, Lori, I heard you say that it's accounted for in the budget. Is there any context about where that came from? I know Carol's not here tonight.
Yeah, Carol's not here tonight. Planning is budgeted for out of the general fund. So, you know, I don't, it fit into the larger picture. I don't know that you could say like it pulled from one area or another. It fit within the general fund budget.
Okay, yeah. And I know that we are trying to reduce our use of consultants, and I think that is a logical and reasonable plan for going forward, but this is a project that we've already started too. And it sounds like, from what I've heard so far, that if we are to continue to do this in the optimal way, lack of a better term, that it could have some serious consequences that cost us more time and money down the road. I also want to remind, having been on this council the longest, is the reason that we historically have used more consultants maybe than what other cities are sized, and I don't even know if that's a true statement, is because we have a very lean staff, and staff is doing a lot with very little. And so we have had to basically bring in consultants to help subsidize that. And I'd also like to remind too that this council is a non-paid voluntary council, so some of the research and other things that have to be done cannot be done by this council realistically.
Thank you. Councilor Bailey?
Just a quick question. I know wanting action tonight, but is there a precipitous need for decision tonight versus after we've reviewed budget and come to terms with that over the next several weeks?
Well, we are going to budget hearings soon, so we do need to know, like, need to have this in here. The first budget meeting is Susan?
Monday.
Monday.
So yes, tonight would be night.
Any more comments? Yes, are we ready for Paul? If you had a comment? Yes. Can you please be on a microphone so they can hear you?
So in this process, we've used 3J Consulting, MIG Planning, Johnson Economics, and EAGLE Northwest. So number one is, it'd be interesting to see where we are total with all that, plus of course, staff time. Secondly is, do you foresee, especially with 3J Consulting, you did a lot of that work, having to bring them back in as well as the other two?
No, MIG has completed their work. 3J is still working on portions of that, but all of the budget numbers include 3J being involved in all of it.
Is there a contingency built into the original quote, like this is, like you're asking?
No.
Lori, I have a question. Having been involved in this process now for a while?
Yeah.
What do you think your capability would be to be able to do this work without the consultant?
Again, it's not a matter of not being able to be in the hearings and answer a lot of the questions and this or that. This is about being efficient with our time and everyone else's time who's at the hearing in case there should be any questions, as I said before, that are very technical in nature, that are outside of my scope of knowledge, that are very specific to the rules and processes on the back end of these studies. I'm not going to have that during a hearing. So then that means, like I said before, that we are actually having to go back and to, excuse me, continue the hearing or respond back basically at a later date, once I've been able to gather the information that I need. So that's really what it comes down to, is trying to be as efficient as possible with everyone's time.
Okay, and this might be a question for, that Beth can contribute to also, but in the steps that are still pending?
Yeah.
That we anticipate, is there any liability ramifications that could be caused to the city? Any legal issues, anything that could potentially cost us more money if we don't have you involved?
Certainly, I think with the EOA and HNA findings, if you didn't have us involved in writing the more extensive findings that we, I think we need to write, then you could get a lot of questions that you might not get otherwise, that might require either a lot of staff time or re-engaging with your consultant to avoid those. Completing the UGB and urban reserve analysis is something that's going to, I think, require a lot of thought and a lot of decision about where to draw that line. I would say that those are squarely between staff and consultants, where we're trying to give the best suggestions possible to have the city at least risk. But city staff, for instance, know an enormous amount about local conditions and about infrastructure that is necessary. So it's essentially a team effort. If there's concerns about having us in the county hearings and concerns about being able to answer questions in a more cost-effective way, then I would say having us remotely, I don't mind not?
It serves the same purpose.
I don't mind not driving up to Columbia County, honestly. I love it here, but it's okay for me to stay in Eugene that day. So, and sometimes people ask questions in the moment that are still hard to answer, where you need to dig back into the GIS data to figure out what the answer is.
Thank you. I feel comfortable, I mean, this was something that wasn't, mostly wasn't in the scope of work, so this is an additional cost that we would have had to pay for. I trust that we will try to be diligent in our use and try to. You budgeted somewhat conservatively here, so hopefully maybe if we do a good job, we won't have to have as many meetings to contingency. I mean, I would hope that you would be conscious of that amount, but I'm basically looking for someone to make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask one more question really quick? Sorry. What is the timeframe that you think this will span? Do you think this will all be necessary within the fiscal year of '24, '25?
I hope so.
Yeah.
I'm sorry if you already covered that.
Oh, no, no, no. I just, I really hope so, but this is the kind of thing you can't necessarily predict.
Have we done any extra meetings that you weren't expecting or putting on the calendar, but we weren't prepared, or we had more questions, or we asked you to come back, added to it, or they've been pretty much by the book?
I don't, I don't think so. We've moved around meetings when it's made sense to move around meetings and tried to be as agile as we could. There's a few things that we're doing that we didn't necessarily exactly foresee, but foreseeing how these processes go two or three years in advance, it's really hard. There's a lot of ways in which things get interesting.
Hey.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilor?
So I'm going to make an amended motion, and it's that council approve up to $50,000 contract amendment for completion of the 50-year plan in support of council goal 2.1. However, that those meetings are conducted virtually whenever possible, whenever practical to save money.
Motion to accept up to $50,000 contract amendment for the completion of 50-year plan, part of our council goal 2.1, hopes that we will, virtual meetings as much practical as possible. Any seconds?
Second.
Bailey, seconds. Any discussion?
We have an opportunity to, I'm not super comfortable with the up to, not to exceed 50. That's already pretty much what it is. I'd like to see the 7,000 taken off on the meetings to do remote, and I'd also like to see that contingency either halved or taken out completely.
A discussion, additional comment to adjust?
I'd worry about doing the adjustment down because we don't know on the virtual. I would worry that right out the gate, we would be back to needing to go over it again if they need to be in person for specific purposes.
Is none of this underneath the purview of the city manager's contract limits of being able to just to write the check, but because this was off on? But because this was off on the original contract, is that why?
And I guess just with the uncertainties of how the process will unfold, I imagine that's largely why the contingency is what it is.
Correct. And we would not spend contingency without written permission, which is, I mean, email. Would be written permission directly from Lori.
Seeing the contingency is if there's contentious and there's extra meetings that we weren't hoping for. What are these other items? We have a motion and a second. Let me take a vote, or does someone want to amend the motion? All those in favor of the motion, Counsel President Miller, motion, say aye.
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 Aye. Ohs?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we're on to the calendar. For all views, we do have a urban renewal meeting following this. But today, we have a calendar, we're May sixth. The ninth, we have planning commission at seven PM. Again, farmers markets every Saturday, nine to two. I think we'll have better weather this weekend. Better, May sixteenth, Parks and Rec at six PM. Followed by May twentieth, council work session, six PM, followed by council meeting at seven PM. May twenty-third, EDC meeting at noon, planning commission at seven PM. A reminder, May twenty-seventh, city offices close in memoriam of Memorial Day. Any updates interim city manager?
On the twenty-third, I would be the city manager.
Is there a planning commission scheduled for that night, the twenty-third? That is off the book, planning commission, but it's special meeting, executive session only in any.
Time?
What time?
It's up to you. Seven.
It's probably six PM? Okay, six PM? Thank you. Anything else? Larry?
Nope, that's it.
Anything, minimum or deputy director, Conjensen?
Yes, just a couple of updates from the police department side. We have a sergeant recruit opening soon. Of course, that'll be a lateral position to get some experience in here, hopefully. And one thing that we've done that is pretty excited about it, we took one of our full-time officer positions. So that, one of the big needs in our department right now, one of the big liabilities, I guess, that we're looking at is our inexperience in the officer ranks. So a need is experience. And we really kind of thought about how we can attract experience here. And what we landed on is we took one of the full-time positions and split it into two. So it's two part-time positions. That's a savings of the city, about twenty to thirty thousand dollars because we're not going to be paying benefits to these positions. We were also able, because we're not paying benefits, to up the hourly wage to make it more attractive in the hopes of getting either, you know, a recently retired officer to come out here, work a couple of days a week. There's also been, one of the things I've seen throughout my career is sometimes a female officer will get pregnant and then just not come back. And it's not that she doesn't want to come back and be a cop. She just maybe doesn't want to do it full-time because of, you know, she's now raising a kid. So they're looking for this part-time position. And so that's what we decided to do. And so we spoke with the union, the union's on board. We went ahead and posted it on our city website. We've already got one application from someone who's going to retire in June from a larger agency that's interested. Once we get it up on the, basically the Police Board for Oregon is the DPSST site. And once we get it posted up there and a couple of other places, I'm hopeful that we're going to get a handful of qualified officers. So that's pretty exciting, I think. We have a, our current sergeant Larson is in the Metro Sergeants Academy. I talked to him today about how that training's going. He's in his final week and he says he's making good contacts. He's learning a bunch of stuff that he wasn't aware of. So I think it's definitely beneficial to him, which in turn will be beneficial to our officers and their citizens. We have one officer who is in the field training program locally here with our own PD. And then we have one that recently graduated academy that's his first phase of FTEP is with the sheriff's office. So they're helping us out with that by taking Officer McFarland. And then we're also exploring several background investigation options. We've been kind of all over the board with backgrounds lately. From what I can tell, and it's really important that we get a good, thorough, solid background. So I've been exploring the options with that, trying to find what's going to be, we're going to get one, the best bang for our buck, but two, who's going to do a very thorough and professional job in that background. So I'm okay spending a little bit more money if we're going to get a solid background. And then just on a side note, I was kind of now, you know, disclosure, I kind of cherry picked some of these stats here. But I found it interesting, I was looking back over our numbers, calls for service. And I noticed in the detail section, which is a detail, right? Cops is going out on different details. Premise checks, right, which is a self-initiated activity. They're actually going out and looking at businesses or residents or whatever. Suspicious vehicle, same thing, right? This is not just an officer driving by and ignoring something. This is an officer driving by going, well, that looks funny, going out and checking it. And drugs, it says vice, which is like our drug stuff, which goes hand in hand with if officers are out there doing stuff, they're going to find more stuff. What was interesting is all of those categories for the month of April jumped up pretty dramatically. Even if you go back, I went back to December. And all those categories jumped up pretty good, which is telling that, I look at as the morale is increasing, that's why they're out there doing stuff as opposed to just, oh, I'm driving around waiting for their shift to get over. They're actually getting out of their cars, they're making contacts and doing stuff. So that's, and like I said, I cherry picked those stats, right? There's other stats that maybe have gone down a little bit, which is good, right? We want the assaults to go down and things like that. But I'm just, I'm really proud of the officers getting out there and keeping their motivation up and getting out and working. So I just wanted to share that with you folks. You have any questions at all for me about anything going on at the PD?
I just, one, you brought up the part-time sergeants and one was a retirement potentially. Does that, you then still pay PERS?
Part-time officer, not sergeant. Sergeant's going to be a full-time. Yes, we will still have to pay PERS. I think it's social security and I think there was one other that we're all mandated to keep paying.
For part-time, it's all based on their hours and.
Medical is a big savings. They get most of the other benefits.
Anything we're required to pay will pay. Other questions?
Thank you. Thank you guys for Earth Day again. I think that was about a month ago, it was a great showing. And I've had a lot of people compliment you guys throughout the month on that.
Mayor, none of my did not bring up. You received, I can't remember now, we send out or not, Luma Linda? I mean, Luma Linda.
Luma Vista.
Luma Vista. Yeah, we just want to make sure you're aware of that. Dave, want to mention any?
Sure, I can give a brief update. The city received notice that the county received a vacation request for Luma Vista. The tenants on that road or the residents are asking the county to roll that over to private ownership and it will no longer be a public road. We are the largest property owner at the end of that and we're in all of the planning documents as such. We would lose our access ultimately to our property from the south. And that's a major deal for this city to absorb. So just want to make you aware of it. If you have any feedback, there is a hearing at the county. We'd be happy to share that feedback.
They're looking at the whole, the whole road. Getting to the end.
That's correct.
Yes. On the mic real quick?
This is something that Tyler can confirm. The last couple of iterations for the city manager recruitment, council was able to look at all of the applications. So of the seventeen applications, you're only, it sounds like you're only going to be able to look at nine. So I would suggest that you ask the recruiter to look at all the other eight and make sure that they didn't miss something, so they didn't gloss over somebody. And I think that was, that's an important element to consider.
Thank you. Thank you.
Let me follow up on that then. So is the request then that you see all the resumes, all the applications? Is that, what do you want me to tell them?
I would like to see all the applicants, I'd like to see all seventeen. Want to see who they identified as the nine, but I'd also like to see just the eight so I can understand why they eliminated those individuals. I don't need them to do a write-up. Don't need them to do an assessment of the paper. I just would like to see the paper.
That the consensus of the council?
I don't have a problem with that. I was going to say if you block out the name, but it's not going to matter because you're going to see everything else where they're from and all that. I mean, it would be just nice to see that they're eliminating somebody. And if all of us say, no, we like that candidate, then maybe we can ask them to revisit that.
My understanding is they were eliminated because they didn't meet minimum qualifications, which I would imagine this council would not want to entertain someone who didn't meet the minimum experience or education qualifications. I don't have a problem having that information shared, but I personally don't need it.
I'm in the same boat. We hired them for a reason and that's to screen those applicants. So I'm fine either way.
Seventeen's not a big number. I could review everything. I like seeing why people were like, oh, and if it is just for requirements, that's easy enough.
The only thing I get concerned about is if there is a disagreement, rather than having a summary as to why they didn't, why they weren't selected, then we're going to be going back to them again, asking why, so.
There's no guarantee they didn't.
Opening up the box there.
Can't pull them just because they didn't meet the minimums. You don't know that. See that. Would we be okay having them email Larry and then him to want to see?
I think they could bring it all in.
Let me, let me work with them and see what they can do either that way or send them to us. Maybe we could get them all in and then they, on the meeting we're going to have, they would just talk about the nine or whatever, let you want somebody else included. However, we can, we can work on that to get something done here.
Okay, let's move on. Counsel Bailey, any updates?
I just want to thank everyone for helping me come up to speed on the council. I appreciate everyone's effort and you've been welcoming and asking or answering all of my questions as we go through. So thank you much. Additionally, the school board budget side of things, we're working on the next year's budget. Biggest thing happening on the school side is the changeover for Warren and Grant Watts Elementary. So we're looking at all of our K and pre-going to Warren and consolidating one to three in Grant Watts, three in Grant Watts. Be aware.
I heard they lost a finance director.
They did, so a finance director, there's a new opening there as of July.
I think St. Helens is recruiting too for a finance director. Yeah, she went to Tiger.
I didn't know, it's such a hot job.
Counselor Jacobs? Counsel Holmes?
Yeah, just quickly, there was the League of Oregon Cities Meeting in St. Helens on Friday. I was able to attend Counsel Santiago, the mayor, and also Carol with our finance team. Always really good information shared. They shared a lot about the financial situation for cities, which I will share in kind of the next discussion that we have around the URA. But in short, they've done a survey and they found that thirty-six percent of cities were currently facing budget shortfalls. On average, about eleven point seven percent. And then more than half of the cities within two years will be dealing with having to navigate shortfalls. So they're trying to look at all of the alternative funding scenarios that could be used by local governments and at the state level. So they're doing a pretty comprehensive report. They're working with a team of consultants to identify those opportunity areas and then also try to identify what might be the right tools for cities of different sizes to deploy. So, and potentially some legislative fixes that could be on the horizon. So it's great to hear that there is that focus and that many of the cities are in the same boat. I also did ask too if there was any further update or anything that we needed to do for the recreational immunity. And Patty said that she was going to be sending around a memo clarifying kind of what steps are necessary or not, I guess, for the cities to take advantage of the new recreational immunity. So just be on a lookout for communication on that. Good for me.
Thank you. Counsel President Miller?
I only have one thing. The mayor and I attended the city-county meeting in Vernonia on the thirtieth. It was great. City of Vernonia did a great job hosting it. And sorry if I'm stealing one of your topics, Joe. The major, you probably add to it. The major topic that was discussed there, of course, was the shortfall with the electricity and the issue that St. Helens faced with losing the solar panel manufacturing plant. And then also, of course, the electricity shortfall that we face here in Scapus. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I did attend with Counsel Holmes. And we did bring up not just the lack of funding, but we asked about spending. And are they looking, because LOC is taking this upon themselves to really look into better ways of budgeting, funding cities. And I asked about spending as well. So they're looking at that as well, on cuts if possible. We did go senior center lunch, I saw there Larry once. Wednesdays and Fridays, they're serving lunch. And Monday and Fridays, bingo, it is open up again. So get out and enjoy that. Did go to the meeting for dinner. And then again, Grant Watts auction was really good about a week or two ago. Saturday, I think they raised over sixty thousand dollars, one of their biggest fundraisers ever. And then Salmon Derby this last Saturday, yesterday, a few days ago, also raised money for schools. We went through a tour of John Gun County building, their soft opening there. They'll be opening that this fall for county offices. It looks a lot like our middle school and they completely remodeled it. We'll probably try to get out there sometime. It's a really, really nice looking county building with a really nice museum. CET is going to be a portion of it and some of the commissioners will be using it as well. That's all I had for tonight. I appreciate it. Any adjournments?